All right. I'd like to call this Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting on September 9th, 2025 to order. Mary Lee, would you call the role?
Yes, sir.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Akerd?
Here.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening and just bear with me as we go through this evening. It's been a while since I've sat in this position. So anyway, there are two opportunities this evening to speak on city business. First, the attendees are invited to speak regarding the two public hearing items tonight. I'll announce when these opportunities are open. If your comments relate to the subject of one of those hearings, speak during the public hearing. Second, citizens are welcome to address council on any city matter during the public hearing, public comment section. I will note each time this is available. We, tonight, Chief Mike Carrier will lead us in our invocation and Councilwoman Akerd will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll stand.
Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before you tonight, dear God, and we do thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've poured out upon each and every one of us. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy, for your grace, for your forgiveness, and we thank you, Lord, for the Savior that makes that available to us. Tonight, dear God, as we come before you, we pray for this city council. We pray for the council that you would be with them as they make decisions to lead this city. We pray, dear God, you would give them your wisdom, your insight, as they make decisions for each item on the agenda. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that we have to come before you and these that have gathered in this room and be able to make their voices heard. And we thank you, Lord, for the fact that we do live in a country that affords us that freedom. And we know, dear God, that freedom didn't come without a price. And we know, Lord, that there are many down through the years that have made sacrifices to fight for those freedoms. And we know, Lord, that there are a lot that are standing on the front lines today that are protecting the freedoms that we have. We pray, dear God, for them. Ask for your hand of safety upon them. I pray tonight, Lord, for the responders of this city. We have a great bunch of men and women in the police, fire, EMS field, and those that provide the other public services to us. I pray, dear God, that you would just keep your hand of safety upon them and protect them and be with them as they serve us. And again, Lord, tonight, we just pray for your presence here in this meeting chamber, and we ask all this in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Okay, next on our agenda is the declaration of the vacant council seat process. I guess, Ms. Bush, why will you be leading us on this of to fill the seat of the East District that Councilman Mark Hutton held? His resignation was effective September the 2nd. Our charter dictates what, how this process go. We have to appoint someone within 30 days. And I guess we'll all have some ideas and what, how this process is gonna, what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna proceed forward.
Yep, correct, Mayor. Thank you. As you stated, Councilmember Hutton resigned his position on September 2nd, and per the charter, the council has 30 days to fill that position. Dr. Hutton had served the East District, so the new council member to be appointed would need to be from that East District as well. And then the new appointee would serve the remaining term that Mr. Hutton left. And then the elections would take place next year as, as they normally would. We did, in the council packet, provide you a concept, a proposed timeline and process to make that appointment. If you choose, there is no formal process you have to follow to make that appointment. However, if you choose to go through an application process, we did lay out what that could look like. And that proposed process and timeline would be, tonight, you would declare the seat vacant, which is already done, and then elect a new vice mayor that will come up next in the agenda, and then discuss this, this process. Then, if you choose to do an application process, you could post that application tomorrow, September 10th. That application then could be open through September 25th. You have your regular work session on September 30th. You could review applications at that point. And if you choose to conduct interviews, you could do so at that time. A lot of this will depend on the number of people that express an interest. And then immediately following the work session on September 30th, you could hold a called meeting to make that formal appointment at that time. And then on the October 7th regular meeting, you could swear that new city council member in. And that is just a concept. And I also did send out just in some draft application materials. Those were the materials that were used to fill the school board seat that was vacated back, I believe it was 2017. They were taken directly from there. We can use all of that, or we can take bits and pieces. That's really up to the council, how you choose to do that.
I guess my one question would be for Ms. Smith of, with, I know within the September 30th, if we have our called meeting and take a vote then, of the swearing in on October 7th, of the fact of that not being within the 30 days, would whoever is voted in on the 30th, then would they go to City Hall the next day to be sworn in so that it's within the 30 days, or would be, be okay on the 7th?
I, I think they could be, but you've also, I think your action in adopting a resolution stating that this person is the, is probably gonna be sufficient. If there's any action that needs to be taken by council between September 30th and October 7th, at a special meeting, then you, you'd wanna swear that person in before they took any action. So...
So we'd be okay on the 7th?
I think you'd be okay.
Okay, okay. Does anyone on council have any, I like the, for me, I like the timeline and it gives everyone, I think, ample opportunity to put their application in. And as they come in, then I guess we as council of reaching out to, if there's any other questions that we have or what we would like to ask of the applicants, then we can do that on our, I mean, as far as, on our own, own schedule of...
That's, that will be up to the council to decide. If you choose to have one-on-one conversations, that's acceptable. Otherwise, if you choose to do a group interview, those would be public and we would post for that.
Okay.
You could do that as well.
So can we leave it open, that we definitely want to do, like we do for our regular appointments, that we get an application and we call somebody to talk with them a little bit? So if we decided we wanted to interview anybody, do we need to decide that now, or can we leave it open to make a decision later?
We could leave it open, but it would have to be posted as part of our public meeting notice. So we would have to have a decision made before the packets get posted the week prior to the meeting.
So a week prior to, we could, which would be after the deadline of the applications?
Right at, yes.
Right. Okay. Okay. I assume we should vote on this process and approve it? Do we, is that the best way to do it?
We talked about that. It's not required, as long as we have very clear direction from council.
Okay. I guess a couple things. One is it will be advertised through social media and whatever else, other ways to make sure our citizens know. And with the application, so people know how to apply or where to find the application. And then the other is to be sure that we get copies of the applications as quickly as possible when they come in. So that gives us enough time to talk to people. We know everybody's got crazy schedules these days. So if we can get those within 24, 30 hours, whatever, as possible to be able to talk to, talk with people.
Just to be clear, you would vote on the replacement. You would, you would hold a formal vote and adopt a resolution on whoever's appointed as the replacement. But voting on the process doesn't seem necessary.
Right.
That would be after the work session on the 30th. We'd have the work session and then we would have the called meeting. Yeah. I guess I think it gives everyone enough time to get their applications in who's interested and gives us time to go through the applications. And, 'cause I guess everything's, I guess there's the background check that you'll have to do on that side and making sure that the residency is within the district. So...
Right. Our staff will go through all of the qualifications that are required and ensure that the applicants meet the necessary qualifications.
And then the ways forward on this. Okay.
One question I do have. I know I did hear back from just one person on the application materials about resumes. Does council want resumes to be required as part of the application packet? Or would you prefer just to go with the list of questions that were...
For me, I'll leave that up to whoever the candidate is that's applying and if they choose to send it in or not.
Okay.
We'll have our formal list of questions that we would expect them to complete. And then anything beyond that is optional. Is that what we're saying?
All right. And were there any other questions that you did or did not in, in the ones that were sent out? Were those okay?
I think of those questions, I mean, I'll probably have some of my own, but of that I can forward out as the applications come in of whatever, you know, what, what other questions I may have. Is that...
Right.
That's good.
'Cause I think it's of, you know, of all of this of, I guess, I feel like of going through this process and giving everyone the opportunity to put their name in the hat and to, you know, look at everybody. And this, I know we haven't done this process in the past of it's, it's been appointing someone, but I like this process better of the application like what we'd have for any other board or seat within the city. So I'm good with the timeline, as long as all of that will, as far as what we have to do of the timeline, I think it's, it's fine. I'm good with it. Anyone else have any?
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay. All right. Next, we have with the resignation, the charter states that Officer, Officer Mayor shall become vacant, the Vice Mayor shall become mayor for the remainder of the unexpired term, and another council member shall be selected to serve as Vice Mayor. Therefore, tonight, we must select a Vice Mayor to serve the remainder of the term, which will end the election of a replacement at the January 26th regular meeting. Just, do I have a nomination for Vice Mayor?
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Powers for that position.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Mayor?
Can we ask if she'll accept the nomination?
I'm filling a term until January 1st, so yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Mary Lee, will you call the role?
Yes, sir.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you.
And also, I guess I'll add, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. Yes, one more time. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, there aren't.
Okay. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is on Child Passenger Safety Week, Buckle Up for Life. Councilwoman Fire Robin will read the proclamation. And Samuel Jones, the Child Passenger Safety Program Coordinator for Appalachian Promise, along with Fire Chief Mike Carrier and Police Major Terry Johnson, will accept the proclamation.
Great. Whereas children are our future and it's the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep Americans' children safe. And whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles. And whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the U.S., only one in four car seats, child car seats, are properly installed. And whereas research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk for injury and crashes by 71 to 82% for children when compared with seat belt use alone. And whereas research shows booster seat use can reduce the risk of serious injury by 45% for children ages four to eight. And whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 13 and under always ride in the backseat buckled up in properly installed child safety seats. And a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Tennessee and Virginia child restraint laws require that all children aged eight and younger be buckled in a car seat or booster. And whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children. And whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. And whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia are committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up Appalachia to make choices that will keep children alive and safe. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia do hereby proclaim of September 21 through 27, 2025, as Child Passenger Safety Week in Bristol and the day of September 27th as Seat Check Saturday. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time.
Thank you for this proclamation for as many years as we've done this. We had recently changed the name of our program at Appalachian Promise Alliance from Buckle Up for Life to Buckle Up Appalachia to better reflect a regional identity. We are glad to be able to be with our partners from the Fire Department and Police Department. And that's pretty much, we do at Appalachian Promise Alliance, we did, we can do virtual car seat checks. Also, I am certified internationally in two countries, Australia and the United Kingdom, which means I'm familiar with European seats if anybody is traveling out of the country and needs that knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the proclamation for Child Safety Week. And I just wanna say, you know, that we have a car seat technicians that are certified in the Police Department and Fire Department here. And I wanna say thank you to them because went through that myself, and that's 40 hours of training to become certified as a car seat installer. And they take it very seriously. And, you know, we are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we have some car seat technicians on each shift so they can drop by a fire station. We can get those car seats installed properly. And you heard in the statistics that you read, 71 to 82%, I believe it was, better chance of reducing injuries in an accident with a properly installed car seat. And I think that's the key to it, is properly installed. And that's what we do. We install those, but not only do we install them, we train the parents, grandparents, whatever it may be, how to take that car seat out and reinstall it themselves. And we actually let them do that so that they know if they move it from one vehicle to the other, they're getting it in properly. And so again, thank you, Council and Mayor, and thank you to all of our men and women in Police Fire Department and those at Sam's Appalachian Buckle Up that took the time to become certified and take it so seriously to make sure that our children are transported safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and Councilwoman Powers will read the proclamation. And I believe, is it Sherri Feathers is here from the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network and will accept the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas suicide is a tremendous form of suffering and one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and community can experience, with more than 1,200 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each actual suicide death. And whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among young and young adults ages 10 to 24, as well as the fourth leading cause of death in adults ages 35 to 45, and the eighth leading cause of death for adults ages 45 to 54. Excuse me. Whereas understanding the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee Legislature. And whereas 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council has been appointed to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, also known as TSPN, is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas the organization, TSPN, encourages all Tennesseans to become trained and play a role in suicide prevention to support a greater quality of life. And whereas everyone can play a role in suicide prevention by learning and sharing the risk and warning signs, decreasing the stigma as a mean to promote help-seeking by talking about suicide, using safe messaging, and sharing the available resources. And whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, a handshake, hug, or even a smile may go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And we urge all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and compassion around all people affected by this tragedy. The ninth day of September 2025.
Thank you. On behalf of TSPN, I just wanna quickly say thank you for helping us spread the word that suicide is preventable and help and hope is available. A couple of years ago, as you stated, we implemented in across the nation, the 988 line for people can call, chat, or text. We know younger people prefer to chat and text, so we see hundreds and hundreds of kids that are reaching out. So we want you all to help us in your everyday life to let people know that if they're struggling with thoughts of depression or thoughts of suicide, or they just need a moment, they need, that they need someone to talk to, they can just pick up the phone and call 988 and someone will be there to talk to them. And I like to tell people, you can share your name, because they ask you a lot of questions for national data, but you don't have to share your name. You can remain totally, totally anonymous. Just call and, and just know that help's always there and always available. always available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I take just a second of privilege to, first off, for preparing this agenda, there's people behind the scenes who do this, and for proclamations, this is okay, for proclamations, we really appreciate having those, but they also do take time to prepare and get them in good shape, so we really appreciate our staff who does that. And the other, just as we talk about the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, I know today I spoke with EMS person from southwest Virginia, and they have seen an uptick, an increase of suicides, and just want to thank all the helpers that try to help people and also who have a lot that they experienced themselves in helping people. So, just wanted to thank all our first responders and our counselors and everybody else. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, we have no presentations, and the Board of Education report. Dr. Teeger?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things for you this evening. Excited to share that we inducted our second class into the Athletic Hall of Fame this past Sunday. We had three teams, three coaches, one special contributor, and nineteen individual athletes who were inducted from Tennessee High School and Slater High School into this second class for the Hall of Fame. We also added, if you haven't been into Viking Hall lately, we have a display for an Athletic Hall of Fame area, and so we added a new banner for this second class to that area. So, it was really a special afternoon celebrating those folks in our community. Thank you for recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Week. We've also recently heard those statistics that there's been a bit of an uptick. As you know, mental health is a priority for us in our school system. Last meeting, I told you about our newest therapy dog. This meeting, I wanted to tell you, her name is Dolly, and she goes to training soon, and I actually was at Viking Academy this week and saw Jingle, actually just yesterday, and saw her in action. So, truly, every little bit of our support's help in our students, and even those dogs make an impact on helping to kind of de-escalate situations. And just so you're aware and the community is aware, we have that number on the back of our student IDs, so every student at Tennessee High School who wears their ID has that suicide prevention number, so they have that accessible for themselves or for others if they find themselves in a situation where they want to help their friends. Also, excited to report the return of VT Week coming up very soon. That's been a tradition since nineteen eleven. However, we haven't played Virginia High School in football since 2019, so for the past five years, we've had a bit of a hiatus. But just wanted to make you aware that there are a couple of events leading up to that football game. On Sunday, September fourteenth at three P.M., there's going to be a community pep rally in Cumberland Square Park, the Bristol, Virginia side, and then from five to seven, the night of the football game in the Food City Euclid Avenue parking lot, there's going to be a tailgate prior to the game. Kickoff is at seven P.M. at Gene Malcolm Stadium, so it's hosted on the Virginia side this year, but we'll have them back on the Tennessee side next year, but we're just super excited. If you happened to catch the tire flip down State Street and thought that was a great community rallying event, hopefully you're going to be involved in this as well and see our two sides of the state lines come together in celebration of the VT Week. We're excited that that's back. And then, just a reminder, the seventy-third annual music in the castle is October fourth. I don't think I'll see you again until that, so, until after that event, but seventy-third annual coming up. That's all I have. Unless you have questions, for me.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is ordinance twenty-five dash seventeen, an ordinance to clarify provisions of Chapter thirteen, sign regulations, non-permanent signs. This public hearing is now open, and Sherith Young will present.
Thank you, Mayor Turner. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here for the public hearing for an ordinance to amend the new sign ordinance. That ordinance was adopted, the new sign ordinance was adopted earlier this year and becomes effective October one. As staff prepared for the education materials that we're going to send out to our business community, we realized a couple of little clarifying edits that should be made, so fortunately, we've had the time to get those edits ironed out and get them in line for the October first rollout of the sign ordinance. The first reading of this ordinance was approved on August twelfth, and the edits are fairly minor in the substance of the edits. On the screen, and I know these are terribly hard to see on this screen, but are in your packets, but the yellow highlights are adding clarifying language to the overall sign height allowed for post-signs. We did leave two edits out, so in our first round, we left those out. We're adding them back in here. On the screen, on the left side of the screen, those same yellow edits are also to reflect the clarifying language for the height of post-signs. And then on the right side, you'll see some language in red, and what this is doing is clarifying that a multi-tenant center can't have a post-sign per tenant. So, it adds some clarifying language to stipulate that post-signs are allowed on a per parcel basis when dealing with a multi-tenant center, keep that sign cluttered, just to a minimum of post-signs per parcel, not per tenant. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address Council on this? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next, we have ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen, ordinance designating the zoning of property newly annexed into the city of Bristol, Tennessee as M two. This public hearing is now open, and Sherith will present again.
Thank you again, Mayor. Tonight, we're here for the public hearing and second reading later on in the agenda of the ordinance to assign the zoning for the parcel recently annexed into the city. This is parcel that is owned by the city of Bristol for the purposes of BTS. It's approximately eighty-five acres in size, and prior to annexation, it was zoned A one, which is a general agricultural estate residential district in Sullivan County. The plan of services that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and then approved by City Council at the August meeting, excuse me, proposed that the zoning assignment of this parcel would be M two, which is the city's general industrial district. That ordinance did pass on first reading, so tonight is the public hearing and second reading of that ordinance. The future land use map does identify this area for low-density residential, so that's what's shown on the future land use map. Since presenting this for the August City Council meeting, just a couple of things that are happening or have happened since that date, the City Council, I'm sorry, the City Planning Commission continues to discuss amendments to the M two zone. We discussed that again during the last Planning Commission meeting in August, and I know that there is intention to edit some of the uses that are allowed in the M two zone. Also, you'll see later on in the agenda, coming out of that discussion is a recommendation for a moratorium on data centers, and that would be across the city. That's coming out of that M two discussion, so that is on the agenda later on tonight. Also, I have met with, and other staff members with the city have met with, some of the adjacent property owners adjacent to this annexation site. We talked through the M two zoning changes that might be on the horizon, and then we also talked through the site plan application process and what goes into that once a user for this site is identified, and what they will be expected, and what they will have to comply with as they develop the site. That, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address Council on this matter? Okay, we'll just come to the podium and state your name.
Renee Gaskins, and I am an adjacent property owner. One of my concerns has been you can't really tell from the maps because you're focused on the property that's going to be industrialized. So, I printed off, we printed off a proper tax map, and as you can see, there's hundreds of homes adjacent to this property. That's why we are so concerned, and I appreciate a couple of you talked about, you know, perhaps giving it more consideration, and I think that maybe you haven't had enough visual confirmation of all the homes that are here. And there's also subdivisions here and subdivisions here, I'm sorry. This property here, if you can see it, that is what was left of the farmer's property when this property was taken. So, yes, his home is there, but that was his farm that was left. But the rest of this, there's hundreds of people that are going to be harmed by this, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the direct adverse effect this will have on all of these people. I mean, these are homes here, too, and this is a, you know, this subdivision goes all the way down here. This rezoning of an industrial takes no consideration for the fact that you're putting it next to an entire subdivision and with hundreds of people's lives, nor does your setback require anything different for a residential property. If you have multiple industrial properties here, it is fine if you have a thirty-foot setback, but if you are going to put it next to residences, and this is farmland here where they're still farming and still have cows, they, their livestock is still going to be contaminated. So, that is what I was hoping by bringing this so you could see the effect that you're not seeing on the overhead. I think it would be reasonable to ask that this not be zoned M two, that that is an unreasonable designation for a property that is that close to so many homes, and certainly close to my home. My next-door neighbor has a child with serious respiratory illness that had been on a respirator for the first two years of his life. He will be affected by it. To place an M two industrial designation here is to knowingly place us in harm's way. Your options would be not make it M two. If you're, you can make it a business district if you're intent on putting a business in there. You could even do M one and not do as much harm as your proposal currently will cause. You can, today, I assume, make a motion for variances that will grant us a reasonable setback and a reasonable buffer. Thirty feet is not reasonable. You can't build an industrial site thirty feet from our homes. It's just not reasonable. The other thing that's not reasonable is a buffer of only twenty feet. That's just not a reasonable consideration. And I'm sure if you were residing here, you would want a bigger buffer and a bigger setback if this even went through. The buffer should be, the buffer itself should be at least fifty feet, and we wouldn't want to see, if you're going to put M two industrial there, we wouldn't want to see more than a hundred-foot setback or less than a hundred-foot setback. And you can consider, I know you're still considering to change M two designation, there's some seriously dangerous businesses that are permitted by an M two designation, you know, flammable liquids, liquids and gases under pressure which can be combustible, combustible material. I don't want to see any petroleum products stored there, like I see, and I don't want to see a chemical factory there. One release has probably endangered us for the rest of our lives. Like I said, and I also do have to point out, I know you're doing a, proposing a two-year moratorium on the Bitcoin and the data mining, but our city will not, we don't even have the resources to support that, and that will destroy any nearby property. And lastly, I'm just going to point out that with this proposal, not only are you directly placing us in harm's way, but you're going to immediately create a substantial reduction in the property values that we have. I mean, immediately, our values will go down, and if we had wanted to sell them, that ship has sailed. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name's Tracy Crawford, and I live also in an adjoining property, Springfield Acres, three eighty-seven Springfield, or Beechwood Circle. To add to what she said, I'm having a hard time understanding why, if there's no proposed development, there's no business that's actually shown interest in the site, which we've been told over and over by multiple entities, city, county, even the company itself, BTS, we don't have any plans, nothing definitive. Why go all the way out to M two when, like she said, you know that there's a potential for harm there for the properties that are adjoining and adjacent? And another point is, in cities in the state of Tennessee, and I'll go to Knoxville, which is the, one of the closest, they don't even have recommendations for buffers for M two and R one that are adjacent. They don't even, they, as a matter of fact, this is what they say in their industrial zone, and their general description is the zone that provides areas in which principal use of land is for manufacturing, assembling, fabrication, warehousing, other uses heavy impacts, other uses which have a heavy impacts and adverse effects on surrounding property. These uses do not depend primarily on frequent personal visits of customers or clients, but usually require good accessibility to major rail, air, street, or transportation routes. Such uses are not properly associated with, nor compatible with, residential, institutional, and retail commercial uses. I mean, this is Knoxville. They, and their minimum setback for light industrial, which is like warehousing and, you know, storage, packaging, wholesaling, distribution, their minimum setback is fifty feet, and you're proposing twenty to twenty-five feet, which is less than three car lengths. The Sullivan County ordinances are more stringent and more strict than yours, than what you're allotting. I mean, their, their heavy manufacturing, their M two district, they require at least fifty feet, and it goes into much, much detail. I'll read it if I need to, but I think you could probably research it. Much more detail about what's allowed and what's not allowed, and that setback can't, you can't have any gravel roads or parking lots or cars or anything like that. The other thing, and again, even Sullivan County, you know, doesn't recommend residential and M two zoning together. Other countries have minimums of like a hundred meters between any type of industrial, and their buffering is forestation, like heavy forestation, not just two rows of trees offset. So, I just, I just have a hard time understanding why, if you don't already have something in mind that needs an M two zoning, why you would go all the way to M two, why you would not zone it for something less obtrusive or intrusive, I should say, to the surrounding properties. And then if something comes along that may need an M two, then we can all discuss that. But, you know, it's just, I don't, we don't understand it and we don't want it. And I got a hundred and eighteen signatures. I only did it for three days. I probably could have gotten three hundred if I'd gone for a week. Nobody there wants it, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next, we have the appearance of citizens. It provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter of city business. A response is not likely to be made at this time. In most cases, neither Council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to your concern, but the city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson. I have been provided a list here. First is Michael Thomas.
I live at 1300 Holy Court. I'm addressing a matter of taxpayers' money being wasted, and I have proof on the paper there of an alleyway disposable. It's been not occupied for 60 years. I've maintained my part of it for 40, and now they want to open it up. And it's went through court. The judge said that it had been abandoned by the city, and he sees no reason to open it up. There's, it's a one-way, both ends are dead ends on it, and there's trees bigger than you can reach around it. I just don't understand why we keep going through this process, and we've been lied to. As the homeowners, we were supposed to have a meeting before the last court date. We never did. And there's five other properties that are adjacent to me that have the same problem, but I was the only one contacted with this problem. And Mr. Robbie Green lives behind me, has been there for 60-some years, and he'll tell you, there's never been an alleyway. And I'm prepared to go back to court, which we have a date for, and I have also people coming this time that I never had the opportunity before. And I would like you all to look into the misuse of the taxpayers' money. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Jordan.
My name, excuse me, my name is Jim Jordan. I live at 232 Colony Drive, which is in the West District of Bristol, Tennessee. Mayor Turner, members of City Council. One of your most important functions as the elected representatives of the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee, is to oversee and manage the city's budget. I got an appreciation for the time and work you invest as I sat through an all-day budget session a few years ago. In the opinion of many taxpayers of Bristol, Tennessee, you erred in your approval and funding of the FY '26 budget. By raising our property tax by a minimum of 21% on top of 13% last year, you increased the financial burden on many taxpayers, especially those on a fixed income and those with lower-income working households. There were too many projects and items which exceeded your budget projections, and your priorities were not in order. There is still time to correct your mistake and rescind this before the tax statements go out next month. I appeal to you on behalf of these taxpayers to take this courageous and compassionate action by using the fund balance if necessary. However, if you do not agree that this is in the best interest and is the will of the citizens and taxpayers of Bristol, Tennessee, who elected you to your office, then please pass a resolution under the Property Tax Freeze Act for those who qualify according to its provisions. This would help those 65 and older who live at the property they own and have an adjusted income of less than $44,650 for 2025 or $43,560 for 2024. And thank you for your consideration and action now before our property taxes come due. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we will go on to appointments. We have one appointment this evening to the library board, and we have one candidate, Timothy Baker. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of Mr. Baker?
I can say he's part of, he's active with library activities. He's part of a group and moving into putting his time where his interests are, so. Were you timing me? No, I can't. That's at the end, Danielle. Okay. Talk to the mayor.
Councilwoman Akers has Timothy Baker. Councilwoman Fire Robin has Timothy Baker. Councilwoman Powers has Timothy Baker. Vice Mayor Powers now. And Mayor Turner has Timothy Baker.
All right. Next, we have three ordinances on the first reading tonight. Ordinance 25-19 to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain property as M2 308 Glenwood Road. Ms. Young will present.
Thank you again. Tonight, we're here for the first reading of an ordinance to rezone property located on Glenwood Road. It's almost two acres in size, and the rezoning application request was submitted by Turnkey Foundation Precast, Inc. The current zoning on the site is R2, which is a single-family and duplex residential zone, and the parcel is right here. Adjacent zoning in the area is B3, R1A, and R2. The applicant's request is to rezone to M2. There is no M2 in that area. There is no industrial use identified in the nearby area on the future land use map. We presented this application to the Planning Commission during their meeting in August, and the vote from the Planning Commission was unanimous to send an unfavorable request to the City Council on this request. Happy to answer any questions or go into detail about any of those points.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to take action on ordinance 25-19?
So it's a good idea for us to, if we, to vote it down versus, excuse me, die for lack of emotion?
Yes.
Yes, it'd be better to take an action.
Right.
Do I have a motion? Seeing none, this will die for lack of emotion. Is that what?
No, I motioned to, well, we can do it two ways, I think. We can either motion to approve, and I want to vote it down, so either motion to approve and vote it down, or a motion to not take, to, a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
How's that? Does that sound okay? That sound okay?
So it's a motion to accept the negative recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Looking at Danielle.
Are we good?
That work?
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Okay, next, we have ordinance 25-20, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on establishment of data centers. Ms. Young?
Thank you again. So I alluded to this earlier, but in the Planning Commission, Planning Commission discussion to amend the M2 zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission discussed data centers and ultimately felt that it was appropriate to send a recommendation to City Council to enact a moratorium on data centers for, for a period of at least two years to allow for staff and the Planning Commission to, to research and to look at the, the impacts and the things that go along with data centers. The Planning Commission did vote on this during their August meeting, and what is included in your package is an ordinance to enact that moratorium, and the moratorium references a data center definition, which is on the screen, and basically covers any of the uses that would fall under a general data center definition, and we will continue to work on and revise and look at that definition as we go forward with looking at data centers in general.
Okay. Is there any questions for Ms. Young? Do I have a motion to take action on 25-21?
I'll move to approve this motion.
I'll second.
This resolution, excuse me, ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I will say this, in regard to the moratorium, we addressed it with and discussed a variety of years as far as a time period to, to do a moratorium. It was suggested that we do the two-year to allow staff to take a look at this, realizing that technology is moving so quickly, and where will we be in two years? That doesn't mean that the moratorium would necessarily end in two years. It can certainly be extended beyond the two years and, and to be reasonable in that expectation. This is by no means saying that at the end of two years, the moratorium would go away and that data centers would be fully embraced. It is to give our staff time to research and explore the technology and so that we can, again, make a best decision moving forward.
Thank you enough, Mary Lee.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
All right, next, we have ordinance 25-17, which we have two on second reading tonight to clarify the provisions of Chapter 13 Design Regulations. Ms. Young?
Mayor, I'm sorry. We skipped ordinance 25-21.
Oh, sorry.
But Sherrod is up there anyway.
I'm ready, either way.
I think you have a few more. So next is ordinance 25-21 to amend Chapter 38 Health and Sanitation, Section 38-2 Operation of Junk Yards.
Thank you, Mayor Turner. So this, this ordinance will amend Chapter 38 of the City Code of Ordinances. The Planning Commission has discussed this for some time, for, at some length, the desire to improve the aesthetics and character of the city in terms of having junk and debris and wrecked vehicles in, you know, on our commercial corridors. We do have a section in the code already that talks about junk yards, so this just expands that with some definitions and then also adds some requirements for fencing or a buffer of sort with hedges that would enclose such areas that might be filled with junk or wrecked vehicles. The ordinance also stipulates that the, that junk and debris cannot be stored on city sidewalks or in the city right-of-way. So what is on the screen now is just a comparison of the existing regulation and then the proposed. So you can see that the proposed regulation lengthens with specific definitions that will give staff the ability to enforce some of these things more clearly, and then adds those stipulations for fencing and buffering.
Is there any questions for Ms. Young? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 25-21.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
All right, now we have two ordinances on second reading tonight. Ordinance of clarified provisions of Chapter 13 Sign Regulations. Ms. Young presented during the public hearing this evening. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Young? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-17?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just hope as we're putting some of our signed regulations, it's October 1st that they go into effect, and hope we're doing some communication. I know we've had some different meetings with different people, et cetera, so, but I have talked about it at work session, et cetera. There's a proliferation of yard sign type signs all over our, particularly, I travel Volunteer Parkway a lot, and there are a ton of them, and I think people see one there and they add theirs there. Many of them are in the right-of-way, so they're not even on commercial property. They're on the right-of-way property, which sometimes can block sight as well as be unsightly. Anyway, so I'm hoping that that will help us to be able to communicate what the laws are to everyone, so it's not just some people who are following the rules and some are not. So hopefully we can, some of that can be helpful as we move forward and the communication about it.
Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
All right, next, we have ordinance 25-18 designing the zoning of property newly annexed into the city of Bristol, Tennessee as M2 General Industrial District BTS property. This was also presented during the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Young? Do we have a motion for ordinance 25-18?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second on ordinance 25-18?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to say that we've taken your comments and your thoughts very seriously. I have spoken with Clayton Dow, who's here tonight with BTS. I think something that comes into play here, I understand the setbacks, but the topography of this particular piece of land is very steep, and there, I believe that there would be an even greater setback potentially. I don't, I can't confirm that. I know that in looking at any type of site, there has to be the consideration, especially with it being as steep as it is, of retention. Also, in talking with Mr. Dow, there was the suggestion that you had mentioned forestation, that with it being, with the topography being at the height that it is, that there would, could be the, not forestation as we know it from a European sense, but that there could be substantial buffering there using trees. And then it could potentially be that any parking area associated with this business could be along that area. I have seen a conceptual drawing, not of any particular business, but of what could potentially be there, and it's setback as far as the building itself of whatever may be, would be such that it would not be as visually impacting as if we just looked at the setbacks as they are on a flat piece of land, the buffering being what it is and not with the height of the topography, not considering the need for retention or some type of ponding. So that is why I will support this, but it has been after a lot of discussion, after hearing what you've said, realizing your concerns, but at the same time, considering that BTS and, and the that BTS and, and the CEO of BTS works very hard to be a good community partner and to do this right if and when the time comes to do anything. Mr. Dow, would you like to say anything, or are we good?
Is there any other discussion?
I'll discuss. Just, I'm torn on this, and I am very pleased with the response of the Planning Commission and feel like maybe there's a little bit extra mile to go if this does go into effect. I also appreciate that when this was part of Sullivan County, it could have been a lot of different things that probably most of the things in an M2 or beyond, it could have, have gone in that direction. But I'm gonna not support it at this time, but advocate for more changes and things with our Planning Commission, and I do agree that BTS strives to be a great neighbor for all of us for everything that they do, and hope that that can work out well. I also understand in industrial development, having a pad-ready site means you don't have anybody who's specifically looking, but if you're pad-ready, that's very attractive for industrial groups to be able to determine to come here. Some of y'all are probably aware that we get all the time, and we probably should have a little report or lesson from Tom Anderson regularly, and I know people are here from the Industrial Development Board. We get a lot of pressure, why don't we recruit the jobs that are industrial and pay more? And we do all the time and are successful a lot of the time. They don't get the publicity. People don't remember the different expansions of businesses or new businesses come in that really do grow our community and provide some good jobs. So that part of it's important as well to be able to do that. But at this point, we're not quite where I would like to see us, so I'm gonna vote no.
Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have three resolutions for consideration and action tonight. First is Resolution 25-153 of setting public hearings on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Bristol by owner consent and on the related plan of services. Shawn Hunt, 140 Sweet Knobs Trail. Ms. Young will present on this item. I'll say.
Thank you again. So we have received an application for annexation from Mr. Shawn Hunt. It's for a parcel that's located at 140 Sweet Knobs Trail, which is identified here on the screen. Property is currently zoned A1, General Agricultural District in Sullivan County. It's about six acres in size, and if the annexation is successful, the Hunts plan to subdivide the parcel into two and build a home on each parcel. Tonight, the purpose of the resolution is just to set the public hearings. Staff has started our work to do some research on the property, to map the property, and we've prepared a draft plan of services that we will be taking to the Planning Commission for a public hearing in September next week. The plan of services sets forth all of the services that will be provided by the city. Everything, most everything will be available upon annexation. The Hunts will be required to extend sewer to the property, but it is located nearby. Also, the plan of services currently as drafted, I did advise, excuse me, the property as to be zoned B3, so that would be contiguous with the B3 zoning that's in the area. But tonight, the purpose is just to set the public hearings. We'll be going to the Planning Commission to talk about the plan of services and then come back to counsel for future approvals.
Do I have a motion to approve 25-153?
I'll make a motion to approve 25-153.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 25-154 adjusting the municipal court cost, and our city attorney, Danielle Smith, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, the city is required, is required to remit a dollar to the state treasurer for every court case that's heard in Bristol's municipal court. The city's court costs of $52.25 helped cover that dollar that we are required to remit. On July 5th, that dollar was raised to $2, and so staff's proposals would be that we raise the municipal court cost from $52.25 to include that extra dollar. We're actually going from $52.25 to $53.50 because at $53.25, we have an uneven, we don't end at a dollar.
Right.
And people have a tendency to overpay. And so we're asking for it to be $53.50, which when added to other costs makes the, added to the state litigation fee makes the total cost $81. People write their check for $81. It's a lot less likely to be an overpayment that we have to hunt down and refund.
For 25 cents.
Right, for 25 cents, so.
Okay. Is there any questions? Anyone has, Ms. Smith? Do I have a motion to approve 25-154?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I see Holly back there nodding that it'll help her finance department, so.
Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
All right, next, we have Resolution 25-155 granting Bristol, Tennessee, city schools' Board of Education request for extension on 511 to 515 Melrose Street.
Mayor and council, at the August 12th council meeting, you had approved Resolution 25-86, which offered the property on Melrose Street to transfer that to the, to the schools at no cost. One of the conditions of that resolution was that the school board of education must notify the city of its intent to accept that ownership of the property by August 29th. On August 29th, Dr. Tudor sent an email on behalf of the Board of Education requesting an extension to that timeline to September 30th of this year. So Resolution 25-155, that's in your packet, does grant the Board of Education's extension request as it's been, as the September 30th date.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
All right, next, we have the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you.
A little smaller this.
Much, much shorter this time. So we have the minutes of the August 7th city council called work session, the minutes of the August 12th city council meeting, the minutes of the August 26th city council work session, a Resolution 25-156 awarding a bid for the purchase of Bulk Highway Salt, Resolution 25-157 authorizing the purchase of a pickup truck for Parks and Recreation under the state contract, approval of Resolution 25-158 authorizing the purchase of an aerator from Smith Turf through Sourcewell, approval of Resolution 25-159 amending the fiscal year 26 budget by the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and that's our water fund, Water Works Fund, and then approval of Resolution 25-160 authorizing the purchase of a John Deere Zero Turn mower under the Sourcewell contract.
Any member of council like any item removed from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mary Lee?
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akerd?
Yes.
All right, next, we have our city manager's report.
Thank you. Just a number of events going on. So we are, all of our staff are gearing up for the races at Bristol Motor Speedway this weekend, and then we turn right around and do Rhythm and Roots Reunion Festival the following weekend. As part of Rhythm and Roots, our Park and Rec Department will be doing a Kids Day at Anderson Park on September 20th. We have Citizens Police Academy starting on Tuesday, September 30th, and that runs through December 9th. You can still register for that. We'll have Transit Day on October 10th. We will have Rec and Roll, which begins at Roosterfront Park. It starts on October 11th. It runs Monday to Thursday through October from 2:30 to 5:30 p.m. It's games, snacks, activities, crafts, and items like that for the kids. We have Adult and Student Communiversity, hopefully beginning in October. More details to come on those. I know it's a busy time of year, and our staff have been working on trying to get that all finalized. Halloween at Still Creek Park will be held on October 18th at 5:00. We have Pumpkin Palooza on October 25th, and that will be before Monster Mash, which is also on October 25th, and that is all along with the parade downtown. I think that's it. Gets us through the holiday, up to the holiday anyways.
Lot going on. All right, next, city council comments.
Would you like to? Kelly covered a whole lot, so, and we thank everybody involved with all the events. And just a note, the Halloween parade has gotten, so it's getting close to being as big as our Christmas parade for people's interest in coming out, so look forward to, to that. The 250th birthday of our country committee is going with Sullivan County and Kingsport and the county and Bluff City, so we'll be trying to figure out and challenge everybody who's part of any kind of civic group or club or whatever that wants to look, is already planning or wants to plan something to celebrate our 250th birthday, to check in so we can begin to advertise those as they begin to happen. Just a note on the Communiversity. We really appreciate that. That's a lot of work by staff. It's been a while since we did the adult one, and we, it's, we really need to have it. It's a great opportunity for our citizens to see behind the scenes and meet our staff and see what goes into a lot of the different services and a lot of the roles that the city plays. So encourage y'all to participate in that. You're nodding your head, yes, yeah. Not to mention, we have a police academy as well, and I think the signup just finished with, it's probably started, and fire academy, so encourage people to take advantage of those opportunities to learn more. And the other is just to note that we have a lot of pretty big decisions that we have to make, and ones that we're making, some of them big for the moment, and some of them big for the future. So just want to acknowledge that it's a lot and to thank everybody involved with that, including our citizen input and everybody who's working hard to make Bristol the best place to live. So thank you.
I'll just say thank you, Clayton and April, for attending this evening, and we have Commissioner Slagel with us also, so thank you all for coming out, and if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.